I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to your republic for which stands one nation, a fair, individual, and liberty, just for our own. Welcome everybody to the the
May
No May, City Council. Roll call please.
Andreas, please.
Um, what's that?
Red.
Woods.
Smith.
Here.
So you can.
Okay. Good. Uh, do I have any motion for the consent agenda items?
Make the motion.
I have a second. Does this include the individual for the Does this include the whole agenda? Then I would ask if we take off the resolution for the bringing in the nine to hold this to vote. I haven't talked about it, but we have not talked about it in the group to vote on. It's just for talking about it. That's not what it says on. It says there's a resolution that I'm so. I would like to pull the resolution off. We can talk about it all night and we have not talked this. It's something that this council has asked for multiple times. Do not put things on the agenda without coming through the
Room session.
We already have the room session.
Doing that. We want to talk about it after. Later on. We still talk about it.
I think it's worthy of talking about.
I have to.
Sure.
That's fine. But I mean, we're flexible.
We will amend the agenda to renew last I am zero thirty seven.
Finished that. I don't think we've talked about it enough as agreed.
Relax.
Call.
Would you, Roseanne, to amend the agenda?
I'll second it. All clear?
Aye.
Okay.
Aye.
Okay, moving on. You got to move on the I think I figured actually. It's not getting carried. Have a motion to accept the consent agenda. Make the motion. I have a second.
I'll second.
All clear?
Aye.
Aye.
Post. Uh, citizens' opportunity for comment, public comment or ignorance. Citizens' opportunity to address the council on the on the agenda. Agenda items is set aside for comments from the public on topics of city business other than those listed upon the agenda. Please understand that the council wants to be action on your comments at this meeting. Orders with the Iowa meeting law, marrying the city council, welcome comments from the public persons of the adopted rules procedure, the office of the council. No time is appropriated to get between the same slanderous language. Mayor may eliminate each speaker to five minutes. Okay, so anybody here that would like to address the council?
You want to talk about this now or wait till the meeting?
Why don't we wait until?
No, wait till the meeting.
Okay. Okay, uh, let's go to the action items. Uh, Lieutenant.
Get, uh, current calls for service for April. Fifty-nine of those were the high school of the schools, the SROs. Other nights, typical radar setups, new accidents, calls for service, radar setups.
Let's see, we had one down the industry here today after school.
United States.
What was the deal over here on twenty-second? The ball.
We had a rash from go off.
Yeah, they rolled it hard and back into the field probably forty foot, sixty. They went, they get that thing and flipped their heart. Uh, so between Hundred Thirty-Fourth and Hundred Forty-Second, I think in the cornfield on the east side, just down the road from that new farm and stuff in that field.
Yeah, right in the accident, I don't remember.
Looks like some way she did that.
We had a rash from happening.
Yeah. Okay.
Yeah, if you're on radar setups, set up radar for three times.
Yeah.
Sam, any tickets?
No. That's not.
Or.
That's not on these reports.
Is there any bad
I don't know.
That hurt either.
Whatever.
The industry was wondering if it does any good. Or if we do, try to take us or we don't, we just get points or what?
It's up to the officer's discretion.
Just kind of arm, you got everything else here. We don't know what I'm even hearing. Okay, any other questions, people?
No, thank you.
Thank you.
Great.
What's that?
Uh, on, uh, where are we? Name it.
She's up here. She went in here. Hardly wrecked.
I get it.
Was this it? So, set up, uh, the new business was the Easter egg kind of the church. Um, that went well, done as well as other years, but it went well. And then the plant swap went very well. Any questions? Perfect. Um, betterment? So we have, um, uh, voted on scholarships and, um, who's going to get those? And then our can drive reported, um, a thousand dollars in nine, uh, thousand and ninety-nine? Thousand dollars, whatever. One, zero, nine, nine for the beginning of twenty twenty-five. Um, our financial report was eight thousand dollars. So our Jex for twenty-five are the welcome sign placement fundraising and the scholarships. We are still figuring out the placement because now we find out where we want to place it is to grab this for sale. So, any questions?
So you got eight thousand towards the sign already?
Correct. Press installations.
Well, scholarship, did they go to Anken or Alman?
Yes.
Residents or family of residents in Alman?
We gave one scholarship to Quinn and I can't say her last name. Quinn. Starts with an N. Nigerin.
Yeah, that sounds good.
Is it Niagara?
Niagara?
Yeah. And then about Hundred Thirty-Fourth and she's going to be attending faith Bible Bible's.
Good, good.
We did have three that had two were from Pubsity and one was from Alman. So there was quite a discussion because they were all very good candidates.
Yes.
They represented Alman well, but hard to qualifications. So you have to help them Alman or be from Alman. So.
Yeah, and I think if we, we, we don't have kids, then, then we go to the better recipient or something. There's no or maybe the grandparents are long time and, you know, we, we have new houses for sale, so they moved to Pope City and, and try and keep it.
Local.
They're looking at rewriting their application so that it does limit it more just to kids right here.
Yeah, because it is taxpayers and donated money from people that live here in town.
Yeah, the pockets, yeah.
So the guy selling the land, he won't give you guys an easement before he sells it?
That's what we're working on right now.
I mean, that'd be pretty simple for him to give you twenty-five by twenty-five corner right there.
Yes.
Before he sells it.
That'd be nice. Yes. Any questions?
Nope.
Good. No, uh, no other business for the betterment? Okay. Next up on the agenda is a motion to consider resolution twenty twenty-five day zero three-three. Resolution authorizing the repair and maintenance of Hundred Thirty-Fourth Avenue from ten sixty-five northeast Hundred Thirty-Fourth to Highway sixty-nine. Do you have a motion?
Is this the west? Sharon, was this the east or west?
This is the east side.
This is the
Thirty-three is the east end.
East end.
Yep. And then the other one is the west end.
Correct.
So do I have a motion on this resolution and then we get a second and then what is session? How's that?
So you're going to do the east end first or the west end?
Well, that's just on.
The east end is way worse. If you drive it, you drive it, don't get, and it's rough as and the west end isn't so bad.
The west end is the worst.
The west end, yes.
East end is the worst.
Yeah.
Yeah, the west end is the worst.
Yeah. Going to do both of them at the same time?
We're going to do both at the same time.
Oh, you're going to do the whole street thing?
Why did, why did we split? Why did we split it up?
There was budget years.
So.
Oh, so you're going to do one one year and when the budget ends?
No.
Do the next one.
It, it's, it has nothing to do with budget years. It has everything to do with the type of maintenance required on two separate sections of the road. Okay, so the west section, this is the, there already are contractor for up here. You know, maintenance, maintenance like this, you don't have to do the three bids, especially if you have a contractor. Um, he put in there that there's going to be some four inch patch. So there's going to be a little fluctuation in that price, not by much, but a little bit. And it may be a little lower for the east side. So the west side might be a little more and the east, the east side might be a little less. But he split the bid, the bids in half just purely because the west end should be considered a separate project because of the severity of the road. That's, that's why we're doing that.
And when you say he put it in there?
Yeah, he put it in the bids that I gave you.
Those were the last that.
Yeah, well, they were the last, we discussed, yes. Yep. Yep, we anticipate there's going to be some.
Do you have a motion to put it on the table on the bar, please?
All motion.
Do I have a second?
I have a question.
We're going to take a second.
I'll second it.
Okay.
Procedure and protocol.
Yes, please. Please. Are you with us, Scott?
Yeah.
Okay, Scott's here.
Now, before we talk about all this field tile projects we've got going on, we're going to do this after all completed, right?
Well, see, they're not even going to go over that field tile. We don't know yet.
This.
Some of them might be bored under these though. We don't know this yet.
We have nothing, this is absolutely. This has nothing to do with that project. It needs to remain.
Are you sure?
Yes, absolutely. It needs to remain, because this is only maintenance. We are not doing a full.
They're not grinding up and.
No, this is, this is not a complete redo. Uh, if, if that was the case, the, the code requires that if it is new or we are completely redoing anything, so tile roads, whatever, if it's new or completely redone, you have to follow the rule three. And if it's over a certain all amount, it has to go to public.
And it's made in total.
This is maintenance only. And, and I have discussed this at length with the league city. So this is purely maintenance.
All right, go forward. Okay, so here's my question.
Yes.
So maintenance meaning they're going to grind it.
So they are, but they will not be doing a full replacement of the road. So it's, it's considered maintenance just because they're only replacing a a portion of what is considered the road.
So the elevation when they're done will be exactly the same elevation out. It won't affect anybody's driveways any differently than what it already does.
It will affect some people's driveways in the fact that I have received multiple complaints and written on down those specific addresses and there needs to be, uh, they need, their approach needs to be looked into. I don't know if it's, uh, the concrete has sunk or whatever else, but they're going to redo that and make it so that everybody is happy.
When I ask the question, as I walk around, I see some of those driveways that have two foot of asphalt in there just to ramp it down or a foot or whatever.
Yeah.
That's why I'm asking, but in general, it's going to be at the same elevation.
Yes.
I think of all the people that have to know that.
Yeah, we're worried.
Regardless of me, I'm more concerned about you, your citizen. I'm.
Yeah.
But, but seriously though, if people know, people know that and now all of a sudden they have this two inch lip of extra asphalt, but they can't do that safely, I think we'll have. And that's exactly why I asked that question.
Yeah, it'll be, it'll be a mill infill. It'll be a mill, mill infill. So they'll take whatever they take off, they, they put back. So it, it should remain at the the same elevation with slight improvements. Not, uh, they won't be changing the, the grade elevation, anything like that, just making improvements to approaches as required.
That was another concern with the citizens in here that if we raise the elevation, that wouldn't mess his driveway up because it's already ramped up to begin with. So that's, that was my concern, that it just gets gets back to the same elevation.
Yeah, I, I wouldn't let that happen because we would have a lot of senior residents up here, so.
Can I throw a, something out? What about striping?
Um, you know, if that's something that we, if that's something that we want to do, uh, there are multiple different companies. I, no, I would not. I do not have.
Why you want to pay the money to stripe? Hasn't been strapping for thirty years.
I know.
Street going.
That's why I throw it out there, you know, when it's not. I just throw it out there.
I got a little.
Anything that's going to be done.
Put the stop stripe in.
Yeah, I'll put this, I can put the stop stripes in. I can put arrows in.
As far as, wait, once, spend an extra money then.
No, I'm just throwing it out, Bill. I, you know, we've never talked, talked about it before and I just.
Well, we talked about it before when I was on the council.
Years, you know, that I, I don't remember.
We spent our money in a veteran.
Even if, yeah, even if there isn't a stop stripe, those state laws, you have to stop before the stop sign. If there's no stop, stop stripe. Because there are some small towns that don't have the budget to put stop stripes. So.
Yeah, luckily I, I used to be paying yourself. That's not a not a big thing.
It's just something, you know, something to throw out there, you know, I, I don't remember anything we talked about before, but.
Just due to the, the timeframe of when we're actually putting this in, I would advise that if, if that's the discussion that needs to be had, it needs to be had um, for, um, say a next summer project, not, uh, because it's, this is going to be going in late fall alongside the roads up here and just trying to get all that done and put in before weather changes. And then we've got deterioration to bring the stuff.
It's a welcome project like that. It's going to make it a raceway with. Well, there. They're not talking.
They're not talking about filling the ditches anymore, making walkways or these.
No.
So just a, a goodbye thing for four or five years and then just do the big thing.
Something.
One house never really started.
Ten sixty-five, that's what I was just going to ask. Where the, where, where?
Is that pathway?
I don't know.
It was a belt pathway. I just picked a random house.
Is that between the den where somewhere?
Yes.
Between the stop streets?
Yes.
Someone's, they're at the, the, um.
That's not set in stone. That was just.
No, I understand.
Yeah, and it's just purely. From six to five sixty-nine.
I couldn't give you the exact footage without getting on my computer and those kind of, but I do have that. So it's, it's truly just.
Somewhere, somewhere between the den.
Very dizzy.
Okay, the way you let the citizens know when this is going to happen, so we kind of plan, are they going to, not going to remove mailboxes or are they, what's? The.
We've done that before, I don't believe.
Yeah, they, they've never done that before.
I don't know. What are they going to do with that?
So, so the company that we use, um, they have always requested that they provide their own notices. Um, it's just a part of their service and that is perfectly satisfactory to, to me in the city. So they will provide notices, um, when the, when the time comes. Uh, as for removing the mailboxes, that's, that's not usually something that.
So I think they need to work.
So they're going to start to do one lane at a time or they're going to shut the whole road down and do the whole road?
I think they can do it in a day.
We'll find out when, when it all, when
when they get ready.
It comes through.
I would assume.
Those are good questions that we'll be asking too.
We'll have to discuss it.
Kind of about that all. Should we have a public hearing before we decide to do this? So the citizens have some input. I mean, it's, it's.
No, good news. It's maintenance, city maintenance and.
I thought you just said, before it's done, they made this is going to happen.
Yep.
Yeah, let's just do it.
Let's not get bogged down in the midday. I think it sounds like the word where we're at right now is, are we doing the project yet or not? And then, you know, are, you know, discussing him or not the details of how mailboxes are going to be and what you like to get done and all of that. And it's really kind of not what we're talking about.
Well, very good. Very good. Uh, we've got a motion, we got a second. Is there any other discussion? All clear?
Aye.
Uh, you better, better.
Do a roll call, please. Roll call.
Andreas?
Aye.
Roseanne Bill?
Yep.
Woods? Smith?
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay, that, you got that one good. Now, the next one is, uh, the other end, resolution authorizing repair and maintenance of northeast Hundred Thirty-Fourth from ten sixty-five, uh, uh, to six-three. And that would be the west portion of that. Do you have a motion?
Make a motion.
Do you have a second?
I'll second.
And discussion?
We just do it.
Okay, uh, hearing, no discussion. Roll call, please.
Andreas?
Yes.
Roseanne Bill?
Yes.
Woods? Yep, Smith?
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay, I'm curious. Uh, next item on the agenda is on the back page, a motion to consider resolution twenty twenty-five days zero three-five, a resolution authorizing the hiring of encore striping and painting to clean the streets in Alman. We talked about this earlier. Do I have a motion?
I make a motion.
Do you have a second?
I'll second.
Okay, uh, discussion?
What are they going to do? Some sweep up?
Sweeping. So I had asked that we look into sweeping the streets just to get all the sand off just because of where, you know, we have water running issues to begin with. So this is all fill on this. I don't want everything to fill with sand. So I asked Logan to look at it. So Logan, my question.
So we're going to be.
My question to you, Logan, is how many prices did you get?
Um, so I called four different companies. One of them, uh, well, two of them failed uh, to give me bids. One of them failed to even call me back. Um, this guy, uh, was very heads up and continued to call me to get information and the other one um, did not get a bid into me until, uh, a couple hours after the packets had already gone out. So uh, while it is just maintenance and it's under that requirement, I did do my due diligence, but there's no requirement of three bids. I believe he's going to be a, I believe they're going to be the best contractor to go with simply because of the experience.
So basically all they're doing.
You're not just sweeping them into the ditch or?
No, they're vacuuming. Yes, yes. So it requ, so I had a lot of questions about this because, um, obviously the sand is going to be a lot heavier. Um, and I, I need to know what type of equipment each one of these companies is using. Uh, and so this company has three different setups and the setup that they're going to come out and do, um, the city's going to provide, um, water here in our, from our, our bulk water. I can give that to them for free, which actually lowers the bid a little bit. I gave every one of them that option. Um, one of them doesn't use the water clean, um, and that wouldn't be effective, but they give me a bid back regardless. Um, so they will come and it will, I mean, they, they will have, have these trucks, uh, it will sweep them underneath. There's going to be water to pick everything up and they will all be sucked up into their stuff and they will haul it away. Um, that was the biggest thing was a lot of them said the other cities have a place for the dump. We do not have a place if they can, we don't have a city dump, so. Um, so it will all be removed from the city and it should be a, a good and thorough, uh, job. So.
Good.
Be the first time we've used them, but I'm, I'm pretty confident just with the way he was brought up.
Okay, any other questions? Bill? I'm good. Good. Alright, so we just need more. It says two hundred in the where. Oh, Mrs. Zero, oh.
Okay.
Good. Okay, all favor? Or projected, we got to go on, uh, roll call.
Andreas?
Yes.
Roseanne Bill?
Yes.
Woods? Yep, Smith?
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay.
And when's this projected to start?
Uh, as soon as I let him know that he's.
Alright.
Been approved.
Next week? Or on schedule?
Depends on their, their schedule, yes.
Thank you for. Absolutely. Okay, uh, next item on the agenda is the motion to consider resolution twenty twenty-five days zero thirty-six. It's a resolution for support of the procurement card program city issue credit card. Uh, we talked about that several times at length. Uh, do I have a motion?
All motion.
I have a second.
I'll second.
Okay, discussion? So simply, we're not changing anything. We're just raising the level. There's no, there's no new different card. There's no different structure. We're simply raising the level.
Correct.
And we're paying it every month.
Absolutely.
There you go.
Yeah.
Okay, roll call.
Andreas?
Yes.
Roseanne Bill?
Yes.
Woods? Yep, Smith?
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay, uh, the last item on the agenda, uh, reason we put this out here in the, I think everybody has a copy of the introduction. Just reading, uh, the introduction, um, this is about the most informative information I've ever read about farm tiles and how they work and and all of the different kinds of stuff. And it's really something to read and understand. I mean, it's, it's something that, uh, I have no idea. I mean, you know, what, what they do with these, um, we we had a big problem and I'll have to admit it was at my house, but it affected all my neighbors both sides. Um, one of the tiles, maybe two of the tiles, I don't know. Those tiles are like six feet down. Under, uh, I mean, six foot down and they actually, some of them even go underneath the Hundred Thirty-Fourth Avenue and they've been there since the nineteen forties. And, uh, what happened was like is exactly what happens uptown, um, rip holes, you know, get into them. And it causes us to have to clean them out. And if they don't, I mean, huge areas, I mean, huge areas uh, become saturated. And so this is a, a great, uh, thank, Mr. Landy here, Ted from Ames. Uh, he has personally installed these kinds of tile systems called grid systems. Uh, just up and down Hundred Thirty-Fourth Avenue. He's done two projects. And so he's very, very familiar with, uh, what they are, how they're, they're put in, what happens to them when subdivisions come in. And, uh, they don't have any regard for the tile. And if somebody digs a basement, they cut the tile and they got a mess, you know, it'll flood up, back up, everything. But anyway, um, since we're not going to take any action and I want to put it out there because it's a lot to understand. And Ted graciously come, uh, to the council meeting to answer any questions that you might have. Um, I would have to defer to him. He's an expert at it and, uh, um, you know, hopefully, uh, you know, all up and down Hundred Thirty-Fourth Avenue on the north side of the street, it, whatever it rains, I mean, wherever the ground is saturated and it rains, uh, everybody's sub pump runs twenty-four seven. And, uh, they get base water in their basements. There's a couple of basements up there that have nothing in the basements except things that are on stilts because they, they've just been flooded so many times. And what's happened is throughout the construction for the last, this thirty years.
Mine doesn't.
Oh, the guy that has the pipe of them, the guy that has the black pipe in his dish, they, they've always had big, big troubles. And you can see after a big rain, there's a lot of water. It's a surface water and underground water. So it all gets to there. Anyway, if anybody has any question, um, you know, of Ted, uh, you can ask if you don't have read it here already.
So I have a question. So these are on individual properties. Why isn't the city's problem?
They are not on the city's. The, the, the problems is kind of lucky. Go ahead. You, you answer the question.
Well, yeah, the, uh, the, uh, it would be very difficult for an individual with a property, a single property to be able to buy, what has to happen is the only way that I know to fix it anyway is to bypass the, the original outlet. Because the original, the original tile was running through, uh, residential, um,
uh, residential, uh, lot. Uh, if there are obstructions there, or if trees are planted, roots get in it, back it up, causes all kinds of issues. But there's not room within one individual house lot to really bypass and, and successfully get the water to, the water, the water's gonna have to go somewhere, and it's gonna have to go to what we call daylight, in other words, it's gotta go to a creek, it's gotta go to a river, someplace working and openly, uh, outflowing and being in an appropriate location. Um, there's really no way an individual homeowner can, in most circumstances anyway, pull that off because even if you do go around one house, it's, the next house down is still, still likely gonna have that, have that problem. And granted, it's only where you happen to have the tile to do it, you know, everybody doesn't have that issue, but a lot of people do, and it's not, it's not just here. In fact, I'm having a meeting with some folks in, uh, Cameron Estates on the north side of Ames tomorrow night, we've got the same exact problem. Somebody built a house, um, and I met with last year, had pictures when they built the basement, the tile was right here on the basement, and, uh, they had built it and didn't do anything about it.
So, tile is on private property, but in order to fix it, you would have to go to other properties or like city right of way, is that what you're saying?
Well, yeah, just, just, just in order to have enough space and, and the topography necessary to make it work, yeah.
Yeah, okay.
Now, you know, we'd, we'd deal with this out in, out in, you know, farms as well, and it's really no, no big issue, it's, you know, farmer owns enough land that, you know, we're either gonna remove trees and, and replace the tile there, or we're gonna bypass, and we did a bypass on the south side of Madrid, uh, on a Danish Greenwich district tile this last spring, and it was really no big deal, uh, but it's the same thing, somebody planted trees, uh, in an acreage on the corner of town, and rather than deal with the trees, they elected to, uh, uh, just bypass the, the area where the trees were and hook it back into, uh, the downgrade side of the tile and...
Have we identified what tile we're, we're dealing with?
Uh, one of them we have, one of them we have, we have pretty sure we're another one.
So, basically, you don't know where they're at.
But, yeah, it's impossible, no?
What did you identify? What is it?
It's a six inch plate tile.
Plate tile, alright.
See, the thing is, is that these old tiles should have been tied in back before the hole was done.
Well, we know who developed that property.
But the, the city, the city accepted the plat as is, they didn't get in to say, hey, you need to connect all these tiles running to an open area. So, how, as homeowners, how do we know where these tiles are at? How did Bob know he was plating tile, uh, tearing it off the plat?
Yeah, the only person knows is if it's done in the basement.
His yard, takes a turn and goes across the front of life.
And even, even they don't necessarily know. This wasn't at a basement, this was just going through the yard.
But if it's six foot down, basements are, what, seven or eight foot down? And then you, you put a footer in and build up all that?
It's luck of the draw where you dig.
Yeah.
You know, just like Larry, my neighbor, he dug his basement, he hit a tile underneath his basement, he fixed it, stopped digging, went up, that's why his house sits so far on the ground. So, that tile that runs underneath this house, it could come from that second snood, it might even go through scotch yard, we don't know. It could go through scotch yard, go through Larry's, and then go straight to the creek.
So, uh, so if we fix this up at his place, we've got Marla, who pumps 24/7, we got Charter pumps 24/7, uh, Steve Landings, which is Gage, uh, now that lives there, he pumps 24/7, Glenn and Deb Bumble pump 24/7 here, yeah. And if this, what we're doing out there doesn't work, now we're setting precedents, are we gonna come down there and fix it?
Now, you doing the streets and the waterway up there, is that gonna help the problem?
Well, we're hoping, so, it's gonna lower the water table, but what if it doesn't? Are we setting precedents, now we're gonna come down here and fix that?
We don't set, well, yeah, we, we expect it to fix.
So, that was my point, because if you're, if you, say we don't live on farmland, you live in somewhere else in the city, right? If you plant a tree and the tree roots go into your sewer system, or break your pipe coming into your house,
we're subject to...
Your, your homeowner is responsible for that, you can't go to the city and say, hey, because you didn't tell me where this pipe was...
When I bought my house.
When I bought my house.
But the problem is, is, is if it's plugged up, it's plugged up five or six acres behind you.
Yeah.
And if you've run...
And worse.
Right, you're still responsible for, it's not your property.
More responsible for them, unresponsible for you.
Right, for you, yeah.
But you're also talking about your own system that's being plugged by the tree in your case, whereas here, you're talking about drainage tile that's coming normally from farmland, and, and that, the drainage tile has a right of way, it just doesn't, um, you can't just cut somebody's drainage tile off. So, does that mean...
Now, these systems are gonna affect a basement water problem, downtown are up there, secondary.
So...
That's gonna help it. And downtown, where the maintenance hasn't been, they're just placing a cut two foot ground out to get that water running to the pot.
Well, I'm just worried about setting precedents.
Two sec.
We're not, we're not doing this to set, fix anybody's basement. I mean, you guys are trying to fix the problem up here, if that don't work, you have to go plan B. Down here, we know what the problem is, we know what the fix is, this gentleman's been doing it for 35 years, he can do it right, he's gonna come through my property to run it to the creek, so...
He's not, we're not, the way this map shows, it was running all behind your houses?
Yeah, behind the house, but there, it comes right down the side of my waterway.
All coming out your waterway?
Yeah, right there inside, right side of the waterway. I got it on the map side, right? The river.
Oh, so you're coming back from six all the way through, yeah.
Going from 69 to six. And then, top of the hill from, top of the hill to 69, he's gonna go to 69, he's gonna go to that creek. Top of the hill, back to the, right?
Yeah, it cannot all come...
I mean, this is something the city accepted years ago, and it's got into a head, Logan cleans out the tile pipe all the time on, up there on 134th, he just did it not too long ago. Guy had water just back there, cleaned it out, the water went away. That's a problem we can solve, that would never happen again.
I don't necessarily agree with that.
I don't, I don't either.
Well, that's why I said, you know, please hear me.
Hey, Uncle...
Wait a minute, uh, let's...
Rosy Ben's talking.
Yes, look, and you're next, Scott, the water, the water, and, and I'm, I'm not a fluidic, I'm not a tile, I'm not any kind of expert, but my thought process tells me that in a heavy rain, there's a lot of water that doesn't seep into the ground, it kinda comes, it just comes through, so all that water is still gonna seep into that ground, and it's gonna go into that tile that's beyond this possible one, it's beyond that tile that's still gonna drain down to where we fix it, so there's, there's still a chance that they will still have issues.
Well, there's, there's surface water, which is what you're talking about.
Yes, sir.
And what we're talking about is subsurface water.
That's the hard part.
Surface water is here and gone, it can cause issues, absolutely.
Surface water, will it not?
Surface water is here and then it's gone.
It won't, it won't, it won't percolate into the ground.
Well, it, it will to a certain extent, but, but then the, uh, drainage tile, uh, will, will take it away.
And that's, that's exactly my point, is south of this new tile, it'll percolate into that drainage tile, the existing one that we're intercepting, it'll still, it'll still go into that drainage tile and, and head south. I could be, I could be, I could be off my rock right now, I might be by the look you're giving me.
You're looking, you're looking me somewhere.
6D. Okay, Scott, you can, you have a four, sir.
Alright, so, I, I heard some good discussion points here, but I think, again, we're straying away from the bigger picture, and it's possible, uh, you know, that where the blame lies, where the responsibility financially lies, and all that, uh, still needs to be hashed out, the, the four hundred and fifty, we've got stuff eroding our streets, and that is a city problem, these things need to be taken care of, uh, if this is one of those, we fix the problem, then we fix the blame, that, that's my opinion on the deal. And if we have an opportunity to modernize and, uh, bypass, uh, an antiquated, uh, hatchwork system of, uh, you know, barely crunching tiles, uh, I'm all for it, uh, especially since we're, you know, we're not talking about millions of dollars either, this isn't going to, to break city budgets for a, uh, will we get the lawyer involved and try and squeeze the flood out some turnip, you bet, I'm on for that, a hundred percent, but I'm also, uh, in the camp of, we need to fix the problem now, and, and worry about whose fault it was later.
The...
I think that was a mass occurrence.
Yeah, the, the problem has actually amended itself with the, uh, with the, uh, work that was done on private property, it has drained the, the water that was...
I'm, I'm sorry, what was I speaking?
Sorry, it's Logan's talking, it's Logan, um, no, with the work that was done on the, the private property, the, the water that was affecting the, um, the street, um, we had such issues with, um, I mean, we still obviously have damage to the street, it's gonna have to be, um, repaired, uh, we can talk about that in the future, but, uh, that, that water has drained now, um, it is...
Dry.
Yeah, it's dry, excuse me, it is dry, um...
That problem helped your...
But...
The ground is still saturated.
But, yes, but the ground is, is still saturated, so, but that tile hasn't been looked at.
How now?
We haven't found that one yet, so...
When did this work occur?
Where you posted the letters?
Well, that would be, uh, six or seven...
We don't know where it...
We don't know.
We don't know.
We had no rain. Today's, uh...
Well, there was standard water, right?
You know, like this, when the farmer cleared his field out last year, chiselled it, that's kinda when the water problem started. At one time, I had over two and a half feet of ice behind our, my house, and the cornfield where the water kept trickling down, it never did freeze, there was a pond there three quarters of the way up that stayed wet all year, and it just kept trickling down, and it's been wet, it's been so saturated for, since, shit, heck, I'm sorry, since October last year, that you can't even walk back there without sinking to your ankles or knees in mud. So, there is a problem.
Yeah, burn a drop, kinda.
And, and, and that's a rain, so, the, the amount of water, that tile is three quarters of the way full, running through bogs and coming out the front ditch underneath the road there, uh, into the waterway. That tile's, can't bring much water burning through those bogs. And if we ever approve another, another plat, those are the things we need to look at.
The, uh, kinda confusing issues here a little bit, because the, the surface water that was, that was, that was running down the waterway and, and ponding, was the reason that happened, two reasons why that happened. One, uh, the tile, existing farm tile, uh, is shallow up, halfway up the hill. It's shallow because they did some, those are where, which, you know, gotta be responsible, like, appreciate the waterway, but that also, uh, damaged that tile slightly, I don't know if anybody's done it. And then, tree roots cause the water to back up and create, uh, pressure, and then breaks out, causes the tile to flow out, and the water has to go somewhere, so it's gonna go down the waterway, and, and that's, that's what...
See, my son's on brand, my son up there grows a winter frame, and it ran all winter long, like sushi justice somehow, scuffed water in it, it can't run it. I mean, it, I mean, there's a tremendous amount of water, and it grows that through those things that he...
So, it's, the, the tile clogs, it basically plugs it, and then it, artesian wells up from the pressure, from all the water down, everybody thinks it's an artesian well, it's not, it's an artesian clog tie.
It's, it's, it's...
It's one of the weakest points.
Yeah, oh, yeah, I know water, I put it in pipes taller than me for the river, so, I, I know water. So, now my concern is, you come down to you there and do that, and you, you, you tap into six or four six inch pipes, is your 12 inch pipe gonna care?
Yeah, yeah.
If you, if there are gold pipes that need six, six inches, now, now you've created, uh, hydrodynamics, and then your outlet, which is gonna be between your house and underneath that road, the outlet is just as important as the whole deal, because you get dynamics, it, it's like taking a four inch hose and shooting it against a, a mountain, and you can knock a mountain down with four inch hydro hose. So, now we gotta have concern on your outlet where you're coming out. So, and that's rough looking, I, I went by there, it's rough looking on that, uh, south end, on the other side of 134th, so, we need to think...
Water will go, well, see, they're actually...
We gotta think about, we need to address that.
See, they're actually coming on the north side, 134th, you will come into the tubes underneath the road, they're gonna put outlet in there, so, it's one of my clock rates to block.
Yeah, so, it's, it's actually come up, we're not on the road. You're just gonna go through the, his dip, but that's gonna add a lot of water.
Well, it is, but, I mean, for the size, I mean, that's a huge, huge challenge.
Can I, can I propose that we move this to the work session, and then also invite anybody that lives in that area so that we can talk about this?
Yeah.
Like, I understand a little bit of it, but I am still caught up in the, if something happens on my property, why are we, so, can we do that, can we move it to the work session and then publish it so that we can try and get it out to the residents over there that, um, wish your opinion?
And I would, I'd like Scott to be here and, and Andreas, because this was kinda his, uh, input in the beginning here, and I'd really like to know what his thoughts are face to face.
You know, the ownership, if there's a fill-in right underneath their property, they should not be responsible for underneath their property. I, I, they know what's there.
That's all opinion, because I, I've always said, if it's on your property, you're responsible.
So, if it's on my property, I'm cutting it off, and then, uh...
Well, you can't, you can't do that by state.
I mean, we, we're not moving, we're not giving maps, it's not in the...
I know.
It's not in the covenants saying that you got to...
It's just like air, space above your house, you don't know nothing about their car. Somebody flies a, a, one of those little things over your house, you can't shoot it down.
I wanted it, it was there when I bought my lot, I come back a week later and it was going in. You never said nothing in the covenants, you never said nothing on my plot, saying that nothing will be a waterway. I just...
Well, that's the natural, if you see the...
That's the grand, so, I accepted it.
The maps of your houses, that waterway runs right, bobs in yours, you're, you're dead on in the waterway. I've seen the maps.
Yeah, my two lots were both the main waterway coming down here, that's why they cut that in, so, I, that's fine, I know what, I paid a lot of money on that waterway.
I know you have.
You know, so...
So, are you, you do, you know, you, you spent a lot of money in that, or...
I'm more than willing to let it come through my property to do that, just to fix the problem or airbags on the street. It doesn't bother me one bit.
Scott Andreas brought this up and, and, and introduced this to the council, I like him sitting there with his input.
I have a problem, and it's gonna be your problem for other people, they...
Well, he'd probably could, uh, solve the problem for every house, so...
And there's also more problems than just the problem coming off the end of that waterway, if you go all the way up to the east, uh, to how, three houses is, from, uh, 69, you'll find a whole tile inlet with a very large valve, you're capable of going right over the tile, and right next to that, it is, uh, small, uh, so, and then, I, I don't know the property at all, I don't, I don't see property, I don't, I know it's not all of property here, uh, so, you know, we do... I'm assuming that all here, here it is, and then tile inlet, I don't know, but I know how to, I've got problems with the water finding their way into their boxes in our fiber optic system, which is a huge problem eventually, uh, that is all just absolutely destroying the corner there, uh, 134th, 169, which is, you know, gonna be, uh, you know, approaching into the DOT problem, which has all kinds of people involved in this thing, um, and everybody needs to sit down at the table and get this problem fixed, uh, by the water, the problem becomes so expensive to fix, and it becomes complicated.
He's tired, so...
Well, I think we need to get easements and maps of what we know is where to bring to the work session, so we're educating ourselves, we know what's going on.
We don't have any.
I have thought of it, I order, he's more than willing to... I have a lot of those, I know her, he's more than willing to.
Maybe he needs to be here, so we have.
I don't think he'll show up.
Oh. Oh.
So here we go. Here he is. Really?
Yeah, he was here.
Uh, okay, here's what I'm hearing, uh, we will, uh, reconvene Monday night at seven o'clock, and we will have as much information as possible, and maybe some solutions, and, uh, you can hear from the residents, and, and we will, we'll work it out.
Yeah. Tell all your neighbors that we have problems to come to the council, so we, we have a lot of input.
That sounds good.
Yeah.
Question out of that, maybe for, uh, Jan beforehand, the galley, uh, sweeping work like this, not that it's proper, that's not the same. We're kinda curious about that.
You probably have to do an easement.
Yeah, we definitely have to do an easement.
This organ needs to be able to have access to it.
And if it's, to be honest with you, being legal, if it's new construction, you still have to follow the rule of three.
I believe it's ten, ten feet on each side of the lot. By the back, I mean, it has to go a little further down, because ten feet just gotta come to the bottom of the park, so.
I thought you guys had thirty feet easement back there.
No.
I remember you guys, I, that's just on my property, but I have the right to go on that property and clean out for the water, that was in the lawsuit.
Yeah.
We need, uh, written something from the farmer then, saying that he will, uh, give us a thirty foot easement for that, but, because if he won't let us do anything, are we dead to water?
Where's that burn?
The, uh. Yeah, yeah, I, I've been.
We, we need a, a commitment or something, otherwise we're just blowing wind right now as we speak, because we gotta have this schedule.
Have your wiring ready, I'm gonna stay there.
Yeah, yeah, that's, that's the deal right there, that's the beginning of the law, you gotta have that.
I, I've been.
Do you have something to say?
Please.
To answer Bob's question, there.
Yeah, but I gotta have that.
There's only a ten foot utility easement there, so there, you have high power lines running through there, you've got all the HUGS comm cable running through there, not to mention there's a burn. Uh, even talking to Ted, that, that grade will not work. That burn behind his, you can't put that through that big burn right there.
Through it, through it would be going north south.
I mean, running it east west in that burn.
No.
Where the utility easement is.
You'd be, you'd be at the bottom of that.
Yeah, you'd be at the bottom of the, that's already warm, it's gotta be burning, right?
Sort of area.
How was the wall, she knew.
It would mean how the HUGS utility is there.
Yes, Scott.
Scott, do you want, you want to talk, sir? I don't know if they were doing with.
What's the TV?
Somebody was listening.
My, I don't.
Motion.
Do we motion, I'm sorry, just wanted to, do we want to make sure that, sharing some somewhere, since there are city engineers.
I think that would be great.
That'd be perfect, Jeff.
Okay. Do you?
Let me go to that.
You should, Kim here also.
Pretty good, yeah.
And, uh, somebody needs to touch base with the farmer and have a verbal commitment or.
The farmer or landlord?
The landlord.
Farmer's, I guess he said he was, we're too much of a farm, was he? We just have to buy it, just like I did with.
Because I don't want him coming back and saying, oh, now I need fourteen thousand dollars, you need to redress my inheritance compact. There you go.
Alright.
But we need.
Do we have a, do we have a motion, motion to adjourn?
Yeah.
All favor.